Objective property is forty-six twenty-three Klondike Road. Mr. Saleem Demani submits official withdrawal email to me last Friday to state that he would like to officially withdraw his application, given the comments that he received at the planning commission. He felt his best to to address the 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 community's concerns by going back and redefining his or revising his application and making it more palatable to the community and also having more community reaches and have a lot of community outreach regarding his application. Unfortunately, Mr. Demani cannot be here because he is sick, so again, I'm making the formal withdrawal on his behalf. You have any questions of staff?
Just one that you maybe I misheard you. Did you say zero 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 nine or eight?
Nineteen dash zero zero eight.
Okay, I know it's eight. I thought I heard nine.
Do we make a formal motion for his withdrawal?
Yes, sir. I would proceed. Yeah, the formal draw of his RZ nineteen zero zero eight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm moving to accept the withdrawal request of RZ one-nine zero 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 eight.
All right, properly moved. I have a second.
Second.
And I have a double second. Having said that, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right. Has been withdrawn. Okay.
Next before you is is a text amendment, T mod dash nineteen dash zero zero three revisions to the Stonecrest overlay district. Before I get into, just for general knowledge, kind of explain what the overlay is so so the public can know. So you so the overlay is another set of zoning on top of your base zoning. In your regular zoning, you have a permitted uses by right. So if you have a, say, a property that's owned commercial, C one, there's certain uses that you are allowed to do, allowed to operate at that location. Say, if you want to open a auto repair, auto repair shop in C one. Well, if the zoning allows you to open it in C one, then you're allowed, you can do it by right. What the Stone, what the overlay district does is set us another set of zoning on top of that and is very specific to what type of uses are allowed in that area. Generally, is a is a maybe a downtown district, a town center or so forth. And again, the overlay is very specific of what type of uses are allowed. So there's a list of prohibited uses that are generally defined as saying what cannot be there and what cannot be there at their location. Again, so the city has two overlay districts at this current, oh, I'm sorry, I'll take it back, three overlay districts at this time. Apologize to Arabia Mountain. Arabia Mountain, Stonecrest, the Stonecrest overlay, and then the Interstate twenty or I twenty overlay district as well. What was presented to you tonight is a is attempt by the Stonecrest Steering Committee as to try to to clean up some of the some of the language in the in the Stonecrest overlay as well as add a few new text amendments requested by our developmental community regarding the overlay. Because again, the way the overlay reads, there is some inconsistencies that make it kind of hard for staff, staff, the developing community and citizens to kind of read and try to figure out exactly what's allowed and what's not allowed. So right now, it's just as what we have before you again, it's just to clean up some of the language and then add, address some other concerns as well. Just to let you know, this is an ongoing process. Staff would like to have the Steering Committee, again, reconstituted with with a little bit more citizens involved, again, to get their feedback. Because again, we would like to address some architectural regulations, again, look at other tiers as well that we did not get a chance to look at previously beforehand. So again, just want to give you an overall analysis of what the the Stonecrest overlay is and what is there before you. Right now, the new text that we are that the Stonecrest Overlay Committee and staff has recommended is a new to new text. That text is section three point five point twelve to allow mixed-use building package stores and a self-storage multi-story climate-controlled facility in tiers one and two. Before I go, sorry, I wanted to let you know that the Planning Commission didn't recommend this, this, this text. They recommend, they did not recommend this, but again, this is what staff and Steering Committee had recommended beforehand. So just want to let you know, let you know that there's a, I'm just reading this so it will be on the record, so just in case you can't read the the right through, I mean, the mark through. So again, so for mixed-use building package stores may permitted in tiers one and two in accordance with the overlay standards and the following. Package stores may be only located on the first floor of the minimum three-story mixed-use building with with a non-retail component. The package store can be no more than twenty-five percent of the total heated floor area of the building. As far as multi-stores climate control, may be permitted in tiers one and two in accordance with the overlay standards and the following. No outside stores shall be allowed, including vehicle leasing. All buildings should be window architectural treatments that appear as windows. Multi-stores warehouse should be a climate control. A new expanded self-storage facility shall be located at a minimum of fifteen hundred feet of boundary of a new, of another self-storage facility, excuse me. Storage units may be used for the following uses, I'm sorry, storage units may not be used for the following uses. Operating a business or services, enterprise, personal activities such as hobbies, arts, crafts, woodworking, repair, restoration, or maintenance of machinery or equipment, hazardous or toxic material storage, or a living in or sleeping quarters. Multi warehouses shall be a minimum of three-story. All storage units shall be accessible through interior corridors and also the C building setbacks. The following requirements shall be applied to all structures in tiers one, two, high-rise and mid-rise. All setbacks should be governed by MU three. Again, this was a recommend, a text recommended by the Steering Committee and staff. Planning Commission did not recommend that. They they decided to not include that as a recommendation for the City Council this evening, but wanted to be fair on both sides to let you know that was part of the original application. It is up to the City Council to determine if they want to include that or not include that in your in your deliberations moving forward. Also, the is also the new text that the Steering Committee and staff have presented to you, which was approved by this, which was recommended approval by the Planning Commission, was a new tier called the, it was tier six or called the View Shed. As I'll read this into the record, so you are aware. Statement of this purpose and intent of the View Shed is to promote a uniform and visual aesthetics development in which serves as a unify of distinct and visual quality of the Stonecrest area overlay district. B, principal uses and structures. The authorized principal uses of land and structures of the property in its tier six are principal uses and structures which are authorized by the underlying zoning district of the property. So therefore, the underlying zoning district, the base zoning would determine the override authorized uses for the for the property. The prohibited uses for the for this tier will shall be sexual-oriented business, automobile title loans, establishments, pawn shops, package stores, check cash line establishments. Everything else is D E F G H and I are pretty much your standard, development standards for tier four and six, I mean, four and five, I'm sorry, not four and five, tier, tier four, I'm sorry, that's right. Tier four, tier, tier five of the already existing Stonecrest overlay district. As well as this new text, the Stonecrest, the Steering Committee has asked to revise their map. This is the existing map, they're showing you the existing tiers, one, two, three, and four and five. Steering Committee along with staff recommend the changing of the existing map to this new tier, which the new tier will include tier six to let you know the difference. So I'll switch it to this comparison page. So tier two, which is the blue, will extend further east along Mall Parkway, crossing over Turner Hill Road and includes the Stonecrest City Hall, terrace at the Stonecrest and Hayes Park Townhomes, while tier one will extend along Stonecrest Parkway, which will include the Old Sam's Club, New City Hall, Turner Hill Market Marketplace. Further recommendation was the, was asking for the, I'm sorry, further removal of some residential properties along the south of Turner Hill Road, as well as property include the Arabia Mountain Overlay to the west. And there's the subdivision, sorry, Arabia Woods is actually, was actually located in the in the Stonecrest Overlay. They have asked to be removed from the from the from the overlay district, which staff recommended that they that they do be removed and include into the Arabia Mountain Overlay District. And I think that is about it. Again, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the new View Shed along with the map, but not including the the package store or the self-storage, multi-climate self-storage texts.
So Mr., ma'am, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Looking at the map, Mr. Wheeler, the comparison maps in particular, that tract of land that is currently on the old map, not the new one. It's shown as tier four, it's the dark red below City Hall off of Turner Hill Road.
Yes, sir.
All right, when you go to the new map, is that area still in the overlay or is out the overlay?
That one is, is out of the overlay.
Okay, thank you.
As currently now, if if you, if you guys want to proceed to put that in, that's up to you, as you want to. I do have.
Along that same line, the large red section, it's shown, I believe, as Lathony Industrial Boulevard?
Yes, sir.
That was added, what is that?
That is a tier, that is the new View Shed, tier six.
That is, that's the entirety of the new?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Again, it starts, it starts at Chubb Road up to a certain, I forgot what road is, but it starts at, it starts at Chubb Road and it goes all the way back towards Hillendale, where Emory Hospital is at.
It goes north as far as that, is that Stone Mountain Lathony Road or?
Originally, it did, where the red, where the red is, it did extend all the way up Lathony Industrial up to Covering Highway, but the latest version I had, it did not include that. Now, it was part, it was a discussion to include that and part of the View Shed. Staff is is open to include that, but the last version I had was it did not include that, the Stone Industrial all the way up to Covering Highway in the View Shed.
And you have a larger map that has street names on it?
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, I failed to print it, I apologize.
So, Mr. Wheeler, for those of us that ears perked up, is it package store?
Yes, sir.
And? Storage units?
Yes, sir. So, so this is, was the original recommendation back in January from the original Steering Committee. So, so the Steering Committee brought up into different subcommittees and then during at the time, the idea for the subcommittee was to go through each tier and look at all the prohibited uses and see which ones were more, which due to the development with the, with the idea that future development would come to the city, which one would be probably be something that would be would be needed in the future. And they came down to multi-climate self, self-storage. The idea is not to be the self-storage that you see with the roll-down bars or anything like that, but the ones that appeared not to be a self-storage facility, the architectural requirements make it seem like a more of a upscale, upscale version, something more of like apartment homes or something similar to that, not to give the appearance off that is a self-storage facility. The idea of the package store, again, is not to create a standalone package store, but to be something of an option that if a mixed-use development comes in and they have a space that's rented out, they could, somebody can come in and do that as well. Not to be, again, not to be a standalone, but part of a, a, a package store that, or wine store that that comes down if you want to go to your, you know, local wine store, grab something and then come back up to your, to your home. And that's the idea of the Steering Committee, Subcommittee was looking to address at the time. And this is, and they presented to the, to the, to the Subcommittee presented to the Steering Committee and they all voted to with approval, again, with staff approval as well.
So that's, that's in this piece?
Yes, sir, that, that is, that is in the piece, again, is in your, is in the staff report again, but it's, it's a red line through it because again, Planning Commission did not recommend, did not recommend that text. They did not want, they did not want to include that new text in the new, in the, in the Stonecrest overlay revisions. They did not want to include that, so that's why I had the red mark going through it. Did not want to eliminate it completely because again, it was in the original recommendations to Planning Commission, but wanted you guys to be aware that the Planning Commission did not want it, so therefore I struck it through, so you are aware of that, and therefore you can make your decision based off staff, Steering Committee and Planning Commission recommendation.
So let me understand, this was never approved by anybody, the recommendations?
What do you mean, no, what do you mean, sir, by approval?
What you have here is changing with the package stores and self-storage, all of that was suggested.
It was, it was recommended by, it was recommended by.
Recommendation.
Yes, sir.
But it was never approved by anybody?
No, it wasn't recommended approval, no, sir, it was not.
So since it was never approved by anybody, why didn't we just leave it off at this stage and not even mention it, since it was thrown out there and?
Well, it's because again, I'm, because again, it was part of my original, my original packet, staff report, therefore, I do it for all the other staff reports as well. When somebody does not include, I keep it in there so you guys are aware and then you make determination.
Excuse me, folks, excuse me.
Because again, because I'm trying to give as much information as possible, so you are made the determination. I'm, again, I'm just presenting all the information to you, therefore you can proceed to approve it or not approve it. Again, it's just information that I'm presenting to you. It does not mean, it does not mean that it was been approved. All the Planning Commission do is recommend, so it technically is not approved. You, the City Council would be the ones to approve it.
Okay.
Technically, that's.
So, so technically, we could go back and say, unstrike it?
You, yes, sir, you can't go back and say, unstrike it.
Oh, okay. So that's, that's why it was included, so we could have that option?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that makes sense.
I'm giving you the option to do that. I'm not, because it's not my option to take stuff away from me, it's just only recommend all, it's recommend everything that was recommended to you, so you are aware of that. I can't make that, I can't make that decision. I don't think it's right for staff to make those type of decisions unless the City Council instructs the staff to do that.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, do we open a public hearing? All right. Counsel, I'll take your motion for opening public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We will open public hearing for TMOD nineteen dash zero 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 three.
All right. Nineteen dash zero zero three.
One has two zeros and one has three zeros.
I say two zeros.
Yeah, I have three zeros.
Okay.
It's number three.
All right. All right, properly moved, I have a second.
Second.
Good deal. All right, all in favor? All opposed? All right, public hearing is now open. Madam Clark? We will start with those that want to speak in favor of TMOD one-nine dash zero zero three. Mr. Knight?
Mr. Mayor?
All right.
Counselman, I'm here tonight to speak in favor of this ordinance. I was a member of the Steering Committee and I want folks to understand that some of the members of the Steering Committee which recommended this may surprise them. A representative from New Birth was a member of the Steering Committee, Elder Waddell. Mr. Bill Allen's, Bill Allen, who is the majority, the biggest landowner within the overlay, he was a member of the Steering Committee. There were several other folks who are large landowners who are members of the Steering Committee. Why was there a Steering Committee? Because the comprehensive plan of this city says it had to be that way. And that dates back to the original two thousand thirteen LCI plan. The ARC, the Atlanta Regional Commission, the county, and now the city have adopted that, and that's the way it was supposed to work, that after a long public process in two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen, with many public meetings and charrettes and a lot of public input, the final, the next stage was supposed to be get the stakeholders together and make recommendations for the public and for the City Council to consider, and that's where we're at now. As far as these, the, the package before you tonight goes, frankly, I think this package store aspect and the storage, self-storage unit aspect, they are the least important part of this proposal. And I don't think it would harm anything to take them out. There are, there are changes which are more important for the future responsible economic development of the, of the overlay and fixing various problems that came up over the years. I don't know really how these things got in there, that what, it wasn't my idea. And I would say, if you all just want to take those out and adopt the rest, I think a lot of folks, and especially the stakeholder group, would be very happy. Thank you.
All right.
Good evening. I sat on the use committee with the overlay Steering Committee. And while Mr. Knight was not on that committee, we painstakingly went through each and every tier. We talked and had vigorous debate about the things that were added and suggested to be added, which included both the package store and the self-storage facility. I certainly can understand how there are those who feel like that's not a top priority. I don't think anybody was suggesting that it was a top priority. I think the question was, when we looked at the list of prohibited uses, was there anything on that prohibited list that seemed to be things that might be incorporated in order to give full access to the community to various components, not only looking at, for example, with the package store, the issue wasn't so much, we wanted a new package store in Stonecrest. It was, if you were building a nice high-rise facility, which is why it had restrictions on the number of units, the height, I mean, the height of the, the building, if you were building a nice high-rise facility and had residential component and it had a retail component on the first floor, would there be an issue of having some type of small and we very clearly defined what the size of that facility could be? We looked at that as a benefit to a building such as that, but was anybody willing to go to the map, like, oh, if it doesn't happen, the city is going to fail? No, but it was, what can we do to help create more opportunity for businesses and others to come into the area? Same thing with the storage facility. Why was storage facilities knocked out? In most communities, it's because they don't like the small roll-up door type facilities, but the, most of the cities and municipalities around have acquiesced in the idea that the high-rise climate-controlled facilities that don't look like a regular self-storage facility are a benefit. You were trying to attract hundreds of businesses into this area that would benefit from having a quality, high-rise, climate-controlled facility here. If I'm moving into this area, for example, if I'm, if I'm a law office, I have files that need to be placed someplace. I don't want to put them in the small roll-up door place. I want to put them in a enclosed facility that has more security and that does have the climate control aspect of it, and I want it to be a nice facility. So when you're looking at the businesses that you're trying to attract to the area, it seems to me that those are some of the things that they look for because they need those things in place in order to be able to operate their businesses. In addition to all of the new residents that will be coming into the area, where can they put their things in a safe, clean environment that actually blends in with the rest of the improvements that will be going into the area? So those are how we came to those conclusions. I think it is a bit disingenuous of Mr. Knight, and I, I don't like to conflict with him. However, we worked very hard, and I think to say that, well, they didn't care if it got in or not, I think is, is not a fair statement. We worked hard, we believed that we were doing what we felt was in the best interest in making our recommendations. Whether you choose to accept them or not is up to you all. We simply presented information based on what we had been requested to do. And we worked hard on that and we met long on that. So I would respectfully request that you do consider what Steering Committee put forth to you. If you choose not to do it, that is fine, but I would ask for you all in support of the committee that spent a lot of time on this, on these issues as well as others, to please take our recommendations into consideration. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, Council. I support these changes with the modifications that the Planning Commission asked for and only with those modifications. I agree with Mr. Knight, they may be minor, but they shouldn't be there. On the committee, I went to the meetings, I heard Mr. Allen argue against utility businesses as opposed to attractor businesses, that we don't set the tone in that area with basically cheap, utility-style businesses that are not going to invite anybody to move their business there. I heard Elder Waddell mildly agree with him. Of course, I heard Ms. Battle, who is passionate, eloquent. She said her reasons, but I think it's worth pointing out, particularly as it comes to the question of gas stations, that she sits on that committee representing a whole bunch of things and people, but also the gentleman who owns the gas station at two-twelve and Klondike and now owns the land at Mall Parkway and Klondike and wants to build a gas station right there. Now, if that's not a conflict of interest, well, I don't know what is. And he hasn't gotten that property under control either for crime or for happy tenants or for other things there. We need quality development. If you vote to open the door at this time to gas stations, to self-storage, to other, again, what I'll call utility businesses, and by utility, I mean, they're useful, we use them, but we don't want them in what has the possibility of becoming or restoring itself as Stonecrest's premier retail area, which will house a convention center, an amphitheater, another larger hotel, mixed-use buildings. We don't need that there, and I ask you to pass TMOD double O three without any doors being opened at this time. Come back in three years or five years and then say, okay, we've got the infrastructure, we've got the majority of attractiveness in there that we need, now let's put a gas station there or let's allow them, or a package store. But set the tone for Stonecrest to be the tone that you want Stonecrest to have. Thank you.
We still have thirty-three seconds.
Yes, sir, I just want to clear up an apparent misunderstanding. Gas stations are not at issue. The committee did not recommend gas stations be added. It is not part of your package, it was not part of what was in front of the Planning Commission, it's not part here tonight. It's simply not at issue, and it's unfortunate that some folks think that it still is. It is not. Thank you.
Okay. Excuse me, how much time do we have?
Eight seconds.
Come on.
The city did not put the recommendations that you are considering tonight on the website. There was no work packet on there.
Thank you.
So I don't know what's in there.
All right. Okay. Now we'll take those comments for those that are against it. Seems as though they kind of bled together, but we'll start, we'll start this.
Good evening. Dele Lohman Smith, District Four, and I'd actually like to start by clarifying and restating what the previous speaker just said about this information not being made readily available in advance so that citizens could have time to review it and understand. So many of us came here expecting to oppose what we thought was in it, but are now getting some new information about what we thought was in this package and what is being recommended. So I don't know if we can say exactly what we're opposing. I think all of us do not want to see what we consider to be nuisance development that does not set the tone that we desire for the city. I also would like to bring up another issue that was raised by the proponents about the composition of this Steering Committee. I recognize the argument that the LCI being passed in two thousand twelve, it stipulates the creation of some sort of a Steering Committee. However, our charter, which was adopted with the creation of this city, However, our charter, which was adopted with the creation of this city well after 2012, stipulates in Section 2-14 Subsection A that all members of bodies created by the city must be residents. That's what the charter says. I have not found any evidence of any ordinance that has been adopted that changes that in our charter. There is no language. I've read it back and forth repeatedly, and then submitted on behalf of the Stonecrest Citizens Coalition an open records request asking for any legal authority that the city has to appoint non-resident business owners or landowners or non-resident proxies to any committee or body there, uh, like a committee, and was told, given some sort of technicality tap dance, um, and not given a response to that request. So I would, I have objections just based on the composition of the committee and having individuals who are professional attorneys representing landowners having an outsized role in influencing the character of our city over and above the residents to whom our elected officials are accountable first and foremost. Landowners and business owners, developers can be partners. That's great. We, as residents, are the only people who have the authority to hire and fire elected officials. That's it. So you can weigh in, you can have conversations, but the reason that that was written into the charter, I would assume, is because we want those of us who are voters to have that outsized influence, not developers and landowners who have solely a financial interest in our city. And the last thing that I will say, and this will take the place of my public comment, so you can remove that request, Ms. Reed, um, is that we need to be operating with a much higher level of transparency. It is unacceptable that two and a half years into the creation of a city, when we're paying millions of dollars to a company whose claim to fame is that they've created cities all over metro Atlanta, and we can't figure out how to post public information in a timely fashion so that citizens can evaluate it and not have to sit here for almost two hours to be able to understand what's going on and be able to speak about it and advocate for ourselves and for our families and for our children. We need transparency. We have been asking for this since the city was created, and we keep having to come back up here and being made to feel like we're being, uh, ugly because we're asking for what we deserve as citizens. So please, reveal who is on these committees, what legal authority this city has to appoint individuals who are not residents to these committees, and let us know what it is we're opposing or supporting before we get here. Thank you.
Evening.
I am concerned because we, um, I have some documents that, um, talked about the, what is the name of this thing? It's called the Stonecrest Overlay District Steering Committee Use Subcommittee. The part that concerns me is that we have attorneys, Ms. Battle chaired the committee. So to me, that's a conflict of interest. So I'm not gonna say everything that, um, Ms. Smith said. The changing of the, I think that the attorneys who represent landowners and developers have too much power. We need people who are going to really look at the, um, safe, safety and the health of this community. If you're gonna have mixed-use developments, nobody wants to come into their mixed-use apartment and see a liquor store. I know I don't. The, um, Planning Commission staff report dated May 7th, 2019, the proposed amendment, staff was recommending modification to the overlay that includes allowing revisions to the overlay map permitting gas stations by right with specific development standards in Tier 1, 2, 3, and SLUP, which is special use, special land, special use land permits, allowing self-storage facilities and minor auto repair shops. So Tier 3 and 4, we talked about it being conservation and preservation. I think it would be good if all of you could go back to the table and look at some of the other places in Atlanta that have mixed-use developments, like Atlantic Station, for example. They, their green space is being expanded. They're not putting gas stations, they're not destroying it. They are, it, they have entertainment parts to it. And my thing is, if you can change ordinances, you can sit down with attorneys and change ordinances, then you could have changed the ordinances that put that cell tower over there. They have the expertise because they went to law school, they go to ethics classes. You could have stopped the cell tower from being there with your expertise. So I would defer, I would hope that you would defer the decision tonight. Don't change anything in the overlay district until you come back and help us understand more of what is happening. Because developers, and I'll keep saying it, historic, historically, they don't give two hoots about African-American communities, low-income communities, whether they're black, green, or purple with dots. They don't care. All they look at is their pocketbooks. So help us out here. Thank you.
We have two minutes and 18 seconds.
We're still in the category of against. Anyone else?
Chaparral Woods subdivision. Been here well over 30 years. So I've seen where we were. I'm not opposed to growth. We need smart growth. And right now, we're throwing things up, we're doing stuff, and we're just not in order. And so I'm asking and appealing to this council to do exactly what we've asked them to do, and that is take a closer look at what's going on in these overlays. What benefit will it be for us as citizens? We don't need any gas stations, storage facilities, or package stores, not in the area where they're talking about putting them. It's not gonna be a good look from the interstate, and it certainly isn't gonna be a good look to represent the quality of what we want in this, this community. So I'm asking you all to reconsider having those three items. Thank you.
One minute and 26 seconds.
Against? Okay. Close it? All right. Take a motion to, uh, close the, uh, public hearing.
It's Mayor.
Sir.
Whether we close the public hearing on TMOD 19-003. Second.
All right. Properly move in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Public hearing is now closed.
Uh, yes, sir. So again, just to kind of reiterate, so this is a first read, so you guys will now be approving this. Uh, so again, the idea of the first read is to give public comment, uh, give you enough time for, uh, for them to give your comment, and if you so far, you want to add some changes to it, uh, direct staff to go back and make those changes. Therefore, on the second read, it'll be already presented to you, so therefore, you already have public comments, you've already made your, uh, you've already read over it, and then submitted back to us, and we'll again, uh, uh, give it back to the City Council for final, for approval with the changes that you heard from, uh, from, uh, Planning Commission, uh, citizens, and, uh, from your own thoughts and questions and so forth.
And, yeah. And for the citizens who came in late, explain the earliest we can make a decision on this matter?
Uh, the earliest would probably be, uh, um, probably be November, uh, 15th, I believe. No, 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 uh, no, no, not November.
The next, the next meeting?
Next, next meeting, we'll probably just do November 25th, uh, give enough time to the staff to make the corrections and so forth, and then also put it out there for, uh, for the public to, to read and consume, so forth. So, yeah, so there'd be the second, uh, second, uh, committee meeting. That's what my recommendation would be. Again, is to give enough time for staff to, if you shoot, if you, if you, if you guys choose to add additional, uh, changes to the, uh, recommendations, and also to give enough time for the public to consume it and then, uh, uh, review, and then once the, uh, City Council meeting on the 25th, then come back and give their approval, not approval, and so forth.
Yes, sir.
Obviously not to find ourselves in this place again. What's the timeline to give information out to the public so they'll have enough information to come in and make quality?
So usually, we try to do a week, but again, we, we had scanner issues. Again, those are reason, and that's not a, a real valid excuse, but again, it's just, it's.
So a minimum of a week?
That's what we, that's what we try to do. Again, it's a week, a week time to give everybody enough time to review, as well as the City Council to review, and again, to give, uh, so everybody's prepared to, to state. Again, it's not an excuse. That is on staff, uh, and I, and I'll take full responsibility for that, uh, since it is my, my item. Uh, again, so, yeah, that's what we, we try to do. So therefore, I will make sure personally that it is, uh, it is posted and available for, uh, for the city to review.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Anything else, Council? All right. We'll move to ordinance for text amendment TMOD 19-005.
Mr. Mayor.
That's, that's not me. That is, uh, uh, Mr. Denmark or.
Mr. Mayor, if you, if you don't mind if I inject just this one thing, I, you know, just, I just need to let the public know that, first of all, these meetings have always been public meetings. There are no private meetings for the city of Stonecrest, and that's important. Uh, the members of the committee are not hidden. Everybody know, or should know who the members are, the committee, uh, that, that committee consists of. I was the chair and am the chair of that committee, not Michelle Battle. Um, Councilman Rob Turner is on that committee as well. Uh, we had city staff that's members of the committee. We have, uh, several attorneys, uh, including Mr. Knight and Ms. Michelle Battle, as well as, uh, we had, uh, several business owners from the area, and all of those meetings were, as far as I, I know, and if you can correct, correct me if I'm wrong, they were all properly announced and, uh, and, and well advertised. So certainly, I, I just don't want, for the sake of, uh, getting points across, which I do take all your points into consideration, they are all very valid. So that is not at issue here. What is at issue is that I don't want, um, people who may not know to leave here thinking that we have private meetings or we're doing things that we're intentionally trying to hide from the public. As a matter of fact, several people that spoke, at least two I know, including Mr. Marcus, attended those meetings. I think he was at every single one of them, if I'm not, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. And also, um, uh, another speaker was at at least two of those meetings as well. We did invite the local church and we, uh, uh, to be, um, uh, members of that meeting, uh, uh, committee as well. So the, the point is, we, we try to make these media, uh, these committees to be as inclusive as possible. We do, and we did talk about at the committee, uh, when we reconvene the committee a second time, which we will do, we will involve more members of the public at large. Uh, so anybody interested in being on those committees, please, 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 do not raise your hand, but send me an email. Send me emails. I see you all, we hear you all, and trust me, we live here as well. We want to see the best for our city, just like you do. We, we don't want to see misfitted, uh, businesses in certain areas, and that is exactly why we have committees, so that we can have a group of people to look at things. The Bible say, in a multitude of counselors, there is safety. And that's what we're looking to do, to have multitude of counselors that can add to whatever it is that we're trying to do for the city, on behalf of the city. And, you know, so I think the next couple or three items coming up are all gonna have to do, uh, may, I, I think have to do with that, uh, with our, um, uh, Stonecrest Overlay Committee. Uh, so it's the same thing. And if, if you feel that we have left something out, or you feel that we're being intentional and, and, and making certain that information is not getting spread properly, please, 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 let us know. Uh, we, we, uh, most of the, uh, items from these committees, the, the things that we discuss is, is also, uh, app, uh, not advertised, but it is advertised in oncoming ground, as well as there are news articles about it. You can go back through the oncoming ground and look up the news articles. Nothing is hidden. So we want to keep it that way, and we want to have an open forum where you guys can add your comments without feeling that it's not welcome, because it is welcome. And I appreciate you all. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Gladden. All right. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, we're gonna, going in order, I imagine, we're going with, uh, TMOD 19-005?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that is, um, we presented this item, uh, to the council, um, for a public hearing consideration as it relates to, um, uh, what we've defined as party houses. And, um, we, well, the purpose of the ordinance is obviously to address what has become a kind of a pernicious public, uh, nuisance in a blight in many areas in our community, uh, specifically right next door to me. So I have a personal interest in, in this as well, uh, not only as Attorney Denmark, but, uh, Citizen Denmark. The goal would be to, uh, improve the quality of life, uh, for citizens and residents. Obviously, our homes are our largest investment, is where we live, where we reside, where we raise our family, uh, and to have a, uh, a, a party house. And, and we define the term party house to mean a, uh, commercial establishment, with, with someone, whether they live there or not, who's using their residence, um, they're leasing it out, renting it out, charging admissions, uh, to folks to host parties and events, uh, in the midst of a residential, uh, community. Uh, this is, uh, a problem, um, and we don't see it just in the city of Stonecrest. Uh, we see it, um, you watch the news, you see it's happening in Mansions and Buckhead, uh, you see it in the city of South Fulton. Uh, my, my firm is, uh, represents that city as well, and we've done a similar thing, enacted, uh, or presented to that council a similar ordinance that restricts party houses. So this is something that affects communities, um, metro-wide, and the goal would be to, uh, make this a prohibited use in all zoning classifications except 2. And so, uh, we would, uh, urge the council to, uh, to consider, uh, what we've presented.
I will take a, uh, motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we open public hearings for ordinance for text amendment TMOD 19-005.
All right. Properly move in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now open. I'll take comments from those that are in support of TMOD 19-005.
Mayor.
Sir.
I think almost everybody in this room supports it. Please pass it.
Thank you, Colonel.
Council, again, I'm Cheryl Mathis, and, uh, resident of the Chaparral Woods subdivision. But I'm here at this time in representation of. They spoke before the Planning Commission, but didn't have an opportunity to come back tonight, which I did try to reach them, and they were not able to come. But I'm speaking more specifically with regard to Mr. and Mrs. Mark Mann, who live next door to a specific party house. And so I do agree with what the attorney has said, and speaking on behalf of them and the Klondike Association, we are asking that you pass this unanimously. These people have been miserable because they are having parties every weekend, and it's disrupting their lives altogether. Now, if you were to hear her speak, Mrs. Mann. Now, if you were to hear her speak, Mrs. Mann, I'm sure she would move you to let you know what they've endured. And so we're asking, in order for the judge to do what he needs to do, we need you all to pass this ordinance. And so I'm just asking that you all do it unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mathis.
Joe Thibodeau, District Four. We don't have these issues right now at this time in our specific neighborhood. However, District Four has been impacted by what's also covered in this ordinance, when the party houses have shuttle service to and from. Um, we've had, over the past couple of summers, something that's been advertised as the big A food party over in, uh, Sandstone Estates, which has used the, uh, Salem Village Shopping Plaza where the Food Depot is as a parking space for shuttle, um, service to the party. And in that space, away from the party house, is a freaknik-like atmosphere with inappropriately dressed people, not just females, but males as well, in and out of those establishments to the point where the establishments had to contract additional security in order to keep the paying patrons of those businesses safe and, uh, feeling safe and feeling not, um, put upon by the crowd. Um, another thing that I'd like to look, for you to look at beyond this, as far as, uh, unlicensed retail establishments, are also those that conduct retail in their homes, week in and week out, garage, uh, sales and estate sales that go on for months, where on the Thursday and Friday prior to the weekend, you see, uh, wholesalers delivering goods to those homes for them to sell over the weekend. So I'd like you to look at that as well, if it's an unlicensed retail commercial business in a residential area. But I'm definitely in favor of this party house ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thibodeau. Any more in favor of the ordinance?
Greetings, Mayor and Council. I'm Tammy Grimes. I live in the Estates at Trinity Village, and I too am in favor of passing this party house ordinance. I am appalled when, uh, someone can stand in my driveway and say something back to me like, you're not gonna pick up that red cup that you just put down in front of my house. And so to keep me safe and secure, please take this element out of our neighborhoods. I don't need to have my children come and show me where the app has told the person who's gonna pay for the party where to pick up this and where to be picked up from, because now we can't drive over there, we gotta take the party bus over there, and we gotta be here in order to be the... Yes, I vote yes. Please help me stay safe and secure. I don't want this element in my neighborhood. Don't mind people making money, as long as you're doing it the right way. Um, so please, protect our communities, protect our investment, and protect our citizens. I vote yes, Tammy Grimes. Thank you.
Sorry, guys. Hey, y'all, I just want to remind you about one thing, which is, of course, we unfortunately have not seen the packet because the, uh, copy or whatever broke and maybe Staples was closed that day. But, um, the planning commission accepted and recommended to you guys two changes to what was originally recommended. First was, the, um, as, as it was written from the planning department, it said that they can't be within so many feet of, I believe, a county or city park, and the planning commission asked y'all to, to make that also include national, sorry, state parks, such as Waters Farm, and nature preserves, such as Arabia Mountain. The second one, and Ms. Grimes reminded me of this, was that it is not clear, it seems to be implied that it is not clear as to whether shuttles are allowed. Currently says, all guests must park directly on the street, uh, fronting the property. There's an implication that no shuttles are allowed, but the planning commission, um, at the, at actually my suggestion, said, um, to you guys, we recommend that you add the prohibition against shuttles running from an off-site parking to the party house. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus.
We have four minutes and twenty-six seconds.
Okay, folks, any further comments in support for T mod one nine zero zero five? One once? One twice? We're gonna close it. We'll take those in opposition of T mod one nine zero zero five. I'm wavering two snicker bars up here. If you are in opposition of T mod one nine zero zero five. Hmm. Seem to be no takers, Council. Having said that, Madam Court, we close it? All right. This again, folks, is our first reading. I'll take a motion to actually, uh, close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Would we close the hearing for T M O D one nine dash zero zero five?
All right. Properly moved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing is now closed. Ordinance text amendment for T mod one nine zero zero six.
Comment? Zero zero five?
We just finished zero zero five?
I know, that was a public hearing, but we still got a chance to make comments.
Oh. Okay, I'll, I'll open it for Council.
Okay, uh, just quickly, um, took my son five and a half years to get out of college, and we had a pretty big party on our street to celebrate that. Now, does this cover, um, those type of events? So, uh, what I'm looking at, unintended consequences.
And, and that's a fair point, Councilman. We certainly considered that and know you, i- if you, if it's your house and you're having a party, you're not charging people to come, you know, you know, it's graduation parties, those, th- that's fine. And, and there's a specific language in this ordinance that specifically excludes that, so we don't want to capture, you know, that, that's why you have a house. You know, so you, you celebrate with your family and friends, and we certainly aren't, this ordinance certainly does not impact that.
Okay. And the, uh, the other issue I know was mentioned about the shuttle. If in the event, and I know it has to be looked at, as well as that's going to apply, if you are prohibiting the shuttle through something that is not going to exist, is that necessary?
No, no, it's, it's necessary, because, I mean, they, they pull a shuttle up to the, to my hi, I mean, so, I mean, they pull, I couldn't get out of my driveway, man, they, the shuttle is real, and they come off, they come off the shuttle with two bottles, so it's, it's, it's a thing.
Shuttle is real?
It's a thing. And so, you know, I, I, I made notes, and, uh, and I don't know if we adequately addressed, um, the, the shuttle bringing in from off-site parking.
Right.
To the party house. Um, so in the second read, that, that will be addressed.
Okay. Now, I just wanted to make sure, because if you end the party house, there's no need for shuttle.
Yeah, we, 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 we got it now, trust me.
Okay. All right, just don't want to hit any unintended consequences.
Sir.
Right, thanks.
Okay. Council, we satisfied for the departure of zero zero five? All right. We'll move to, uh, T mod one nine dash zero zero six.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, this is, um, another, um, uh, ordinance designed to address, um, uh, perceived evil in our community, is the proliferation of so-called dollar stores.
Yeah, baby.
And, um, you know, th- there are a lot of reasons why, uh, communities around the country have sought to limit dollar stores. Um, they impede, they create these, um, um, food deserts where you can't get grocery stores to, to locate because, uh, of the, the dollar stores. It, they proliferate in, in certain communities more than others, and it has a negative impact on economic development, uh, in these communities as well. And when you look at it also, you see you're getting something for a dollar, and you think that it's, it's cheaper, but based on the unit price, you're paying a whole lot more, so it's uneconomical in the end a- a- as well. Um, so we have crafted this ordinance, uh, unintended consequences happen sometime, and, and some citizens brought some things to our attention just recently, about whether or not we were inadvertently going to, um, um, capture in our prohibition net, um, um, gas stations and things like that. And I know we've heard Knight about people not wanting gas stations, and honestly, they want them either, but, but the goal of this ordinance is not to do that, uh, that's addressed elsewhere. So the goal of this ordinance is not, uh, to prohibit, uh, gas stations, and we've added language to make sure that, that they are not captured, uh, in this. But the goal is to limit the impact of these, what we have defined them as, uh, we don't call them, uh, dollar store, but these, uh, retail discount, small box locations. And so this ordinance, uh, prohibits them in, um, these zoning classifications, and we think you should adopt.
Excellent. Council? I'll open. All right, I'll take a motion to open the public hearing for one nine dash zero zero six.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we open, uh, ordinance for text amendment one, T mod one nine zero zero six.
Properly moved?
Second.
Second, there we have it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now open. I will take comments for those ordinance. Comments for T mod, uh, one nine zero zero six that are in favor? Thank you, Colonel. It has to be legal, we have to do it right, because certainly if we miss one piece of it, you'll be the first to come to the mic and say that we missed something. I could say that to you, Mr. Marcus, because we are friends.
Well.
It's all good, sir.
Um, dollar stores are one of those things I think we all use every now and then. We're in the right place, we passed one, we need something. They are also, like many other utilities that we use, things that we don't want more of, we have. Maybe Mr. Wheeler knows, I'm gonna guess we have a dozen in Stonecrest, maybe it's more. Um, this ordinance is not going to get rid of the ones we have. They will still be there to serve those people who need them. Um, but we don't need anymore. We don't need anymore. We need simply businesses that will attract people to Stonecrest that have a little more discretionary income than the people who prefer to shop at dollar stores, while at the same time, again, keeping them for the, the people who need them. There's just no, there's just no, it's a win-win on this. So please pass it. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening again, just trying to keep it legal, saying yes, we support this. Thank you.
All right. Time, Madam Court?
Eight minutes and forty-three seconds.
Any more speaking in favor of T mod one nine dash zero zero six? Right, you can close it, Madam Court?
In to opposition.
Those that are in opposition? Yes, sir.
Very limited opposition on a technical but important point, sir.
Yes, sir.
I have no opposition on behalf of my clients to the ordinance as supplemented, uh, by, through the statement of the city attorney, which is that it has been revised or redrafted in order to make clear that convenience stores with accessory fuel pumps are not included. However, unfortunately, the copy that is in your packet appears not to be that latest draft.
And that, that might be the case. Um, I haven't looked at what's in the packet, but we certainly have made the change and, um, and it'll be presented to the public by the second read.
Excellent.
And that was the only caveat I had, that, uh, I just wanted to draw that to your attention for the record, that what, what is in this package is not that latest draft.
All right. Well, I just thought you just wanted rocks thrown at you. I, I wasn't clear at the mo.
Too many folks, but I, I, sir.
Exactly. Thank you, Mr. Attorney Knight. Thank you, Attorney Knight. All right. Any further of those that are in opposition to T mod one nine dash zero zero six? Seeing none, we'll close. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Would we close the public hearing on T mod one nine dash zero zero six?
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is closed.
I have a question.
All right. Uh, Councilman Turner?
Um, the last two items, really. Earliest we can get this before council for second read and approval?
Well, we have to give at least, uh, one cycle, so we, at least thirty days, um, yeah.
Oh, has it go out thirty days?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
It, it, we could do it at the next meeting.
At thirty, you mean, the second meeting in November?
Second meeting in November.
The committee in November.
Sir.
That's the earliest we can get it. Okay.
In November, let's see here.
Second.
Okay. Any more comments? All right, um, Mr. Senator Attorney, keep me on task here, uh, just an overview of the public sentiment, um, not for or against, but this is what I'm hearing, uh, as we sit here today, for T mod one nine dash zero zero three, which is the Stonecrest overlay, appears as though the public sentiment would be to have, uh, no package stores and, uh, no mixed use issues with regards to, uh, those multi-climate, um, storage units. So for the elimination of, of, uh, of that information or, or, or that text amendment from nineteen dash zero zero three, uh, as far as nineteen dash zero zero five, uh, which is the party house, uh, ordinance, then we strengthen that with, to make sure that we're clear, uh, with no shuttles with regards to the, to, to the elimination of the party house, um, opportunities also. And as far as T mod one nine zero zero six, which is, uh, the, let's say, discount stores, so that we don't actually call their name, um, the elimination or thereabouts, uh, to not have any more of those units either.
Right, and, and we're gonna clarify that we are, uh, uh, accessory gas stations, um, are not included.
I got you. Good deal.
And also, Mr. Mayor, we are going to, um, add the, um, not just, uh, state parks and, uh, but, uh, city and national as well.
Exactly.
On, as it relates to the, uh, party house within a thousand feet. We're gonna.
Good deal. All right, that seems to be the general sentiments of the, uh, of our constituents here today, and, um, we will take that into, uh, exact order for consideration for you all to, to make sure that happens the way you see fit. All right, so new business, RZ one nine dash zero zero seven, have a first read?
Um, Mayor, we've already, um, made the decision on that during the public hearing.
All right.
So we can skip that one. Yeah, we can skip down to F, floodplain insurance ordinance.
Oh, I got you. Thank you for that. Really thank you for that. All right, floodplain insurance ordinance for two thousand nineteen dash ten dash zero zero three. Mr. Jonah, I think that's on your wheelhouse.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, Council. Um, I handed out a, uh, packet.
Um, I handed out a uh packet uh just just after the meeting started. Um, and it uh begins with the resolution of intent um uh twenty eighteen dash zero eight zero two. Uh, the the first first two pages are a resolution of intent that was uh that was already passed by the council uh last in August of last year uh that uh basically accompanied the city's um application uh for flood insurance uh to be submitted to FEMA. Uh, the s- the third page uh cons is a map of all of the policies that are currently in force um here in the city of Stonecrest. And then on the fourth page begins the or actual ordinance, um actually Article Four of flood plain plane management. The reason why we're bringing this uh before you today is uh we we've been we the city of Stonecrest has been contacted uh by the uh FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Uh, a few months ago, uh they contacted our city uh engineer. And there were some concerns with some of the language in the ordinance that was passed by the city of Stonecrest last year. Uh, apparently, the ordinance that was passed uh was directly from DeKalb County. Uh, some of that language in that ordinance has lapsed and has become outdated. And so FEMA was asking, has asked the city to pass an ordinance with the updated language uh in order for our residents, for the city, to be able to uh continue to receive a floodplain insurance. Uh, this is uh just the first read of this ordinance, and uh we've worked with our attorneys. They've approved this language that's in here. Once again, this language is directly from FEMA, and so we haven't made any changes or anything to it. And so this is just the first read. At the second read, you guys can go ahead and uh pass this ordinance. And then we'll get this over to FEMA so that they can uh reinstate the city's application uh for floodplain insurance.
All right.
For our residents.
Counsel?
This is the updated version?
Correct, so thi- this is the uh basically what happened. Uh FEMA reached out to the city, reached out to our uh city engineer, said the said the wording in our ordinance that was passed last year was was basically inconsistent uh with with the applications for floodplain insurance in the city. So we need to get this ordinance passed in order for our residents, for the residents of the city, to be able to receive floodplain insurance.
Okay. So uh it's actually, as I see it today, uh Mr. J- Mr. Johnson, it is prepared?
Correct, yes, so we we are ready to go. Um, uh, just that we need to have ordinances for the city, must be read, uh must come through two readings before they can be passed.
And um, Mr. City Attorney, again, you're saying that any ordinance has to run the thirty-day course?
Yeah, in section uh two dash one five of the uh charter, it it that's that's where that requirement is found.
Thirty-day course, okay.
Okay. Anything further, counsel? Consider it our first reading. All right. Uh, G, Parks of Stonecrest Pod D, final phase one plat?
Counsel, uh, as mentioned to you in the work session, uh, this is just pretty much just a procedural step uh for the um for the final plat of any subdivision that's uh approved or being developed in the city of Stonecrest. Uh, all final plats have to be approved uh by the city council. Uh, again, I I get out the um four uh large copies for you guys to review. Uh, it's Councilman Clayton, you did ask me, uh, was this phased by the uh uh by the um, uh, I guess, the clubhouse? And of course, no, sir, it is not, this not this phase, phase two is by the clubhouse, this is further down, which again, I have uh. Again, like I said, it's just a procedural step again. Uh, DeKalb County G I S is already approved, uh staff is already reviewed and approved. Again, the only thing that's need uh is just approval uh from the city council and uh we can ta- and then the applicant can take the uh final plat uh down to the courthouse and get it recorded. Uh, any questions of staff?
I was distracted, uh, you recommended that we.
Yes, sir, this, there's literally nothing else that uh they've met all the requirements and so forth. The DeKalb County G I S is a sign of improve. They've met stormwater, uh water and sewer development standards and so forth. Uh, this is just the last step uh for the final plat to be recorded.
It's uh it's phase one.
Yes, sir.
See it, final phase one, okay. Counsel, I'll uh give you two seconds more to peruse and then we'll we'll take uh take a vote.
So Chris, um, sorry, Mr. Wheeler, um, as far as you're concerned, all the Ts across, Is are dotted, good to go?
Yes, sir, it is, it is literally good to go. Uh, then it's just the signature of the mayor and they can take it to be recorded.
Oh, baby.
Okay. So, so with that said, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I offer motion that we accept as um as required. Uh, the final uh plat for the Parks of Stonecrest Part D, Phase One.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Mr. Wheeler? You, sir, we'll move forward. All right. Seeing no old business? We have no need for executive session? Mr. City Manager?
I don't have anything, Mayor.
All right. Mr. City Attorney? All right. I don't know the which uh which turn of the call on first here. Uh, Councilman Rob Turner?
Okay, I'll take you.
All right.
I have an announcement uh for our DeKalb Culture Exchange Breakfast, which will be on November ninth. We will be having a mega job fair for district employees to include teachers. So if you're interested in employment with the DeKalb County School System, or you know somebody that's interested in joining the system, come out, we'll be out a little longer than we usually are. We'll be out from nine to one to ensure that everybody can come in and talk to the different H R people. But we're looking for some quality people for our uh school district. So if you can come, if you have a background in it, you have an interest in it, come out to our breakfast on November ninth at the House of Hope, forty-six fifty Flat shows parkway from nine to one for a mega job fair for the district. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Clayton?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on uh this coming Saturday, um, at ten o'clock A M until twelve-thirty P M, at the A E I Startup Factory, I will I will have my monthly um meeting. Uh, actually, this uh this month meeting will be dedicated to a Ask the Mayor session. Uh, so for those who would like to attend, um, it's open to the public as usual. And uh we do invite you guys out from ten o'clock A M until ten-thirty, uh until twelve-thirty P M at A E I Startup Factory. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Councilman?
Good evening. As always, we're talking census, twenty-twenty complete count census. Tomorrow evening at six-thirty P M, right here at City Hall, we're having our second meeting. If you are so inclined to come out, just come on out, six-thirty. Volunteer, and for volunteers, we're only looking for what you can give us in terms of your time. You can make one meeting or you can make forty meetings, it doesn't matter. Uh, since we last met, I've made five presentations on advocacy for the twenty-twenty census. And we're asking that you all become advocates for a complete count, twenty-twenty census. And uh again, join us tomorrow, six-thirty, right here at City Hall. And uh we probably have a little light refreshment and an orientation session. There's certain thing we want to get across, and we want to be consistent in it. So in order to make that happen, we will have a slight orientation for the ambassadors of the twenty-twenty census. We can all do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. A couple of things brief. Uh, there will be a District Five Forum at the Allen Entrepreneur Institute on Evans Mill Road on Wednesday from six-thirty to eight-thirty. Right next to New Birth Church, that's this Wednesday, from six-thirty to eight-thirty for District Five Forum. Um, also, uh, there is a couple of things that I that I heard that I wanted to kind of get some clarity on and let you know about some things. One is that um it is not often that we have a uh major scanner that goes down several days before we have to print two hundred pages each for everyone. So we'll apologize for that, for not being able to have that out to you. Uh, but that's that's pretty much uh what happened to us on this end. Second is that I want you all to kind of understand, um, hopefully that you all uh feel this way. Uh, we are here to support you. Uh, we are here to do the things that the citizens want because we are citizens also. So it doesn't have to be contentious, it doesn't have to be, you know, fist-tight. We're gonna, we're gonna do the things that you all um require us for mayor and council to do also. However, I do want to uh let you all to try to keep in mind that um businesses have a say too. And they do get an opportunity to sit um on steering committees. They do not have to be residents in the city of Stonecrest for a steering committee. Uh, and you want their input too, um, to participate as Councilman Clayton and Councilman Turner have done in these particular steering committees. Uh, so it's important that we hear, of course, from residents first, but also it's very important that we hear from those folks that represent uh those stakeholders that actually build opportunities here in Stonecrest, whether it's residential, commercial, uh, or industrial. So it's a very, very good partnership. But to um think that they are to be uh excluded wouldn't be the 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 right path to take because they they do have a say-so. Now, you all have the most say-so, we all have the most say-so because we have the vote, and that's the way it's supposed to be. But uh don't discount the fact that uh when people come, companies come and spend their money in a quality way, you want to be able to make sure that that happens, and that's that's the way it's supposed to be. Uh, I'm for everything I I I heard tonight. Um, uh, but we have to be careful about how we say it because it's your mayor and your city attorney that's in front of the judge as we have been before if we don't sell those, say those things in a proper way. So if you hear it at ten thousand feet, we're doing that on purpose. There are some things that you just specifically can't say in public because not all free speech is free. Free speech will get you sued also. Uh, so you have to conduct that in a certain way um that satisfies you as a citizenry and satisfies uh your mayor and council and city attorney so that we can stay in legal bounds. And I think we've done a a very good job of that, uh particularly this evening. Uh, with that, thank you all for coming. And uh, oh, you know what? Um, before that happens, I apologize, I apologize. Um, Madam Clerk, I see where we still have public comments. All right.
Miss Smith would like to speak.
All righty.
Thank you, I'll be brief. Um, I'd love to know the reasoning behind public comment being at the very end of an extremely long meeting when it is sometimes at the beginning. And what citizens can come to expect when we come to these meetings. I I wanted to clarify my earlier comments about um the previous T mod and the Stonecrest Overlay District, which I'm certain that Councilman Clayton did not intend to uh mischaracterize. I was not stating that that any meetings were held without public notice. Um, my contention is that the composition of the committees that are advising the council are not publicly uh clearly notated on the website. After we submitted our public records request, our being the Stonecrest Citizens Coalition this week, some of that was then hastily added to the site in the last four or five days, um, which we requested and appreciate. Um, however, it is not all there. We cannot go to one central location and easily find all of the committees, boards, authorities, and commissions that have been appointed by this body and are influencing policy for this city, which we should clearly be able to do. As soon as I was sworn into the DeKalb County Board of Elections, my phone number, email, I mean, my uh a- address, name, everything was posted very clearly on DeKalb County's website, um, almost at that moment. So all of that, any committee that you want to see for DeKalb County, you can go and see who's on it, who appointed them, what their term is, if they have an office, all of those things. That should be available on our website. That's what we were asking. The charter seems very clear in the section that I quoted earlier that all residents of boards, authorities, commissions, and committees must be residents. So nobody is saying that businesses or landowners or developers should not have a voice. What we are saying is that, one, we need to follow our own laws. I don't see any justification and still have not been given any besides people's words of legal authority to appoint individuals to any such body that resembles a board, authority, commission, or committee, whether you call it a subcommittee or a steering committee or a district committee or an advisory committee. The charter seems quite clear unless we can provide other justification, legal justification, in which case we need to change the charter. Last thing. I forgot. So we'll just leave it at that because it's been a long night. But I hope that we will get some clear legal response to that, not just we want to work with people. We appreciate that, we as citizens want great businesses, we've been asking for that. But we need to be within the bounds of the law, and it needs to be clear that we are following it. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Dave Marcus.
Mr. Marcus?
I do agree that large landowners and businesses are stakeholders. They have a stake in Stonecrest, they have a stake in Stonecrest's success. Some of them, such as the Kellys, the Stewarts, are residents, and there's no reason legally that they cannot be part of the committee. Other people such as Mr. Knight and Ms. Battle have a great deal of experience and, in Mr. Knight's case, history with Stonecrest, and themselves are a resource. And I would suggest it is good and meet to use that resource and have it on the committee in a non-voting fashion. On the other hand, people who are not represented on at least the Stonecrest Overlay Committee are any people who are disconnected from businesses, who just happen to live here, whether they have real estate and other expertise or not. So as that committee is regenerated for next year, it might be good to consider a balance of the various types of stakeholders and to consider using experts as members who participate in discussion but do not vote. That's just my two cents on that. I I think there's a a common ground that could be met without kicking Mr. Knight's expertise to the curb and saying thank you or not. But ultimately, all of those people have, they're stakeholders, they care, they have a slightly different agenda than the rest of us. While they do want Stonecrest to succeed, they want it to succeed in a way that generally maximizes their profits. I gotta respect that, I kind of like capitalism. But I also like Bill Allen a lot, and I think of Bill Allen as a person whose motto could be capitalism as if people matter. That's a good balance. Uh, I don't know the other people personally, I can't say whether they are what type of capitalists they are. But, you know, let's just not throw out the baby with the bathwater, but let's get a good, healthy, hot tub of people to talk about this beyond the committees.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus.
Mr. Knight?
Never totally pleasant experience to be a lightning rod for the evening. I, I'll begin by saying that the city charter says, "All members of boards, commissions, and authorities of the city shall be residents of the city." That's clear. However, a steering committee is not a commission. It's not an authority, and it's not a board. The members of the steering committee expressly are excluded from the ethics portion of the city code because they are not members of the boards, or commissions, or authorities. So, it's all right to have non-residents as members of steering committees, number one. Number two, the Stonecrest Overlay Steering Committee has been a hundred percent transparent. It's been advertised in advance. Its meetings have been public. Public comments have been allowed, and at least two of the folks who spoke earlier have been attending the meetings and actually have participated in public comments. And that is wonderful. That is, that is entirely welcome, and it's the way it should be. But I will say that if you, if somebody thinks that the information about how people get appointed to these steering committees is not on the city websites, they're wrong. It might take a little bit of work, but the, every member of these steering committees is appointed by a resolution in public meeting of the city council, and the members are specified in that resolution. So these folks are, including myself, are all very clearly identified. I will say, too, that the, the reason that the city council, the mayor and city council have the, have the authority to appoint steering committee meetings is because there is a separate city ordinance which gives them that authority. This was passed in a public meeting. It was passed with the advice of the then-city attorney. And again, anybody who thinks that the steering committees are not treated separately, and somehow there's an extra legality about this, simply has not looked at that ordinance which cloaks city council and the mayor with the authority to do this. I, I'd like to finish up by saying that, um, we are all stakeholders here. Uh, I believe Mr. Marcus, and I'm surprised by this since he knows me so well, or I thought he did, is profoundly mistaken about me. Sure, I represent my clients. Sure, I like to make money. But my passion and commitment to the city of Stonecrest, going back to two thousand thirteen, when I began working with the mayor and the other folks who worked towards Cityhood, is well-known. It's something separate and above my, my role as an attorney representing clients, and I really, really reject the attempt of anyone to say that it's different.
I understand. Thank you, sir. No, excuse me. Excuse me. What's do we have?
That's the last one that I've...
I'm sorry, Ms. Gil. I'm sorry. All right. Want to move to adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
All right. All in favor? Aye.